Brecken?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Daner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is an interview with Dan Burles. Dan, you want to come right there and tell us a little bit about yourself? I thought, was it you or your brother that was on this committee?
Me.
That's what I thought. You want him back on?
Yes.
Okay.
Not done yet. Not done yet, no. We barely got started, like other things.
Yeah.
I apologize for not being here last week. I told Pete I was doing a kind deed and I honestly was, so. It's not nice to laugh about that, Mr. Scott. It was a nice deed. So, I got on the committee because I was interested in what's happening with the seniors of the city. And we did a lot of talking about what's happening and what isn't happening. Talked about the other committees, the other groups that address seniors' needs. And we did a couple of major projects. One was to put together a survey. We sent out to the seniors in the committee, in the community. And that was interesting, came back with some interesting results. A lot of similar thoughts. People wanted to be safe and they wanted, you know, things to happen. So, we talked about places that seniors could go. I mean, a lot of the trails, the sidewalks, just being able to get out and about and feel safe. Address the garbage issues for seniors in their neighborhoods and apartment living, which, you know, basically all apartments, the garbage situation is taken care of by them. So, and, you know, the problem, part of the problem that we ran into was that we had a full committee when we started and in the process lost two members. So, that didn't help the congruency at all. And so, we have to add, hopefully that I'll get voted back on and find a couple of other members too in the community who want to do this and go from there. So, I've talked with Ann Brodessen, who is the chairman. And I'm the, I was the vice chairman at the end of the year. And so, we're kind of ready to go if, like everyone else, get ready, move on with COVID and move on with vaccinations and move on with everything else. And so, we're ready.
All right. Questions for Dan?
Dan, I'm delighted that you reapplied because you're a very valuable member of that group and that committee. And you're a hard-working member and you have a lot of good ideas. And unfortunately, we got shut down with the pandemic. And we do need to get some members, you know, that we can appoint to get a full, you know, a full complement for the committee. But you have really contributed significantly to that committee. So, thank you for reapplying.
Appreciate the compliment, the kind words. And, you know, we're looking for people who just don't want to be on a committee. That they want to do same things, you know, make phone calls, write letters, you know, get out and talk to people, find out what is going on. And, you know, just small things like we were at Lewis and Clark Center and the museum, talking to those people who work there, finding out what is available. And that's been part of the problem for seniors in the community. They don't really know, you know, what's available. So, trying to get the word out to them.
Any questions? Appreciate your work.
You mentioned that you had two major projects. What was the second one beyond the major survey that you did?
It was the issue of garbage.
Oh, I remember that, the size of the containers.
Lots and lots of comments about garbage collection and cost and, you know, so.
I remember that now that you mentioned that. And they have a smaller container now that they can order.
Right, right.
Do you think we're ready for another survey for our seniors?
Not until we get a full committee.
Right.
Right. But I think so, you know. This is a, it's a long gap between then and now.
What year was that survey?
Just a year ago or so.
Oh, sure.
It wasn't, this committee is actually brand-new.
Mm-hmm.
So, the city's never really had a senior advisory committee up until formulating this one, so.
Well, I think there's a lot of work to be done. I think you sound like you're right on top of it.
I think there is a lot of work to be done. And the people that are left are great, they want to do it. And it was tough losing people, you know. Tried to guilt them as much as possible when they're walking out the door.
Well, thanks so much.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate you applying.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you.
I have a proclamation, a couple of them to read. I'm going to read them from here. Whereas there's an estimated 37 million Americans with kidney disease and most don't know they have it. And whereas it is critical that attention be brought to this often overlooked but increasingly common disease, major risk factors are diabetes, high blood pressure, a family history of kidney failure, and being over the age of 60. And whereas if left untreated, kidney disease can lead to kidney failure. Whereas the month of March is National Kidney Month and March 11, 2012 is World Kidney Day. And whereas the National Kidney Foundation is leading the patient-centric organization in the U.S. dedicated to the awareness, prevention, and treatment of kidney disease. Now, therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim March 21st as National Kidney Month and call upon the citizens of Sioux City to take care of their kidneys and get tested if they're at risk. We'll get that to the proper organization. I know there are some people here today with the COVID Memorial Committee. If you'd like to say a few words after I read this proclamation, please go ahead and come up to that microphone and we'll let you say a few words. Whereas COVID-19 is an illness that's spread across the world, creating a global pandemic, having devastating effects on human life, our community, and our economy. In worlds, world, our nation and our community have worked tirelessly to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 vary dramatically by individual and the long-term health implication for survivors remains largely unknown. And whereas each life lost to COVID-19 matters and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and the surrounding community. Now, therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim March 1st, 2021, as COVID-19 Memorial Day. In Sioux City, to remember and honor the victims and survivors of COVID-19 pandemic and to acknowledge the sacrifices and service of all first responders, medical and health professionals, and others who have stepped up to serve their community during this global pandemic. Anyone want to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay? If not, we'll get an update on COVID from Kevin. Kevin?
I'll say something. Thank you. Just somewhat of an update of where we're at is that this week we're on target to do just shy of 3,000 additional doses. Those will be both the first initial dose and the second dose, the vaccine rollout. You know, it was interesting now as we're trying to kind of read the barometer of the community, there's more and more sources for the vaccine. We have some of our pharmacies that are providing it also, which is great because the more outlets we have, the more potential to get more vaccine administered. This is the first time that we've actually had some, we had to close off our appointment scheduler this morning just to get organized for tomorrow. We actually had appointments that were not filled. So, we're looking forward as to take a look at the alternative ways to get those doses delivered in some way, shape, and form.
Do you have some for tomorrow open yet?
We did have, but we had to close down because of all the coordination, the paperwork, and all those sorts of things for tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
So, we're looking at about 180 doses we'll be getting out through an alternate method and maybe working with some of our underserved populations to go to some of those locations. That's one of our intents with that, too.
Okay.
I think then also next Monday, the 8th of March, we just announced today having basically what we may perceive as our large, our final large community clinic. Then we'll be looking at alternate methods for delivering the vaccine after that. So, we'll be, that's about 1,500 we have for next Monday. We did expand that criteria under the Phase 1B. So, we will still do healthcare professionals, we will still do the 65 and older. We will also do the first responders, schoolteachers, welfare. We are now moving into the disabled and their caregivers, living independently in their own residence. And then we're also looking at the congregate shelter staff to get those done. And then there's one small segment of those that inspect hospitals, nursing homes and that. That's probably only about 100 people. And then also our jail staff, not the incarcerated individuals. So, we're going to move forward into that Phase 1B and see where we're at after basically a week from tomorrow, kind of assess where we're at, be doing, and then seeing what the next methods. We have now reached out to the majority of our meat processing plants. I think I've heard from All But One. We've determined the number of individuals they have willing to receive it. Just on Friday, we did receive a call from the Governor's Office or Department of Public Health. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has had the emergency youth authorization. That is a one-dose vaccine. There's really a focus to be able to get that into the arms of those individuals employed through those facilities. So, I've been working with them to determine the number. And then also, they will probably be doing some things onsite with local providers. They're working out agreements with those to get that vaccine delivered. That's where the focus and the original Johnson &amp; Johnson will be going. But we will continue then to work with, maybe allocating to pharmacies, some of the medical clinics. One of the things that we have to make sure that we're doing that doesn't affect future allocations is that anything we're allocated, we have to get that out and basically dispensed, 80% of it, of all vaccine received. Otherwise, it can affect our future allocations. So, we have a goal to continue to do that, to get it out into more and more individuals. So, I think those are pieces of, with a puzzle that keep going forward. And we, every week, new information comes. Even in visiting with some of our meat processing plants, we discovered that some of this is being handled at a national level, some of it is across the statewide, and then also some of the local entities. So, it's navigating, I said, that kind of, that climate, I guess, is what it would be. So, that's kind of on the vaccine front. One thing we're very thankful for is that our case counts. I think we had 34 in one day, but those have maintained at a relatively lower level. And so, we're thankful for that. And it shows the presence and prevalence of the disease is minimized at this point in time. So, we hope that continues. But I think it's just continue to work on this and continue to get the vaccine out. So, any questions from any council members?
Kevin, just a question for me, and it's just for my own personal information. So, but, well, I mean, it would be any constituents that maybe are in the same vote as well. Obviously, I fit into that next tier then, so I've been waiting for that. Are we saying that as soon as, like now, today, March 1st, it opened up to that demographic and I should look at making an appointment?
Yes, with the link that's coming out, being released tomorrow, you would be eligible.
Okay.
So, you can go online to sign up to access one of those appointments.
And just so other people know as well, I mean, I saw, obviously, I could sign up through your organization, your website, or I could call down there and then go down to Tyson Event Center to one of the larger events, larger vaccinations. Or I could hop on at Hy-Vee's website and be able to go through their questionnaire and then make an appointment at one of my local Hy-Vee's or a local pharmacy. I know Drilling has that as well.
Right.
Now that we're in that phase, I should be able to make those appointments.
I can't speak on behalf of where the pharmacies are at. That was a decision that we actually made assessing where we're currently at and what we saw for demand for today. The pharmacies may still be looking at that 65 and older. But I think over the next week to 10 days, they'll probably be reassessing and gaining direction from their corporate. We're not all at the same stage of the game across the state.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure, I can't basically say if you went on there, they'd accept you. But I do know for our clinic, we're looking at doing Monday, we've opened it up to expand to that area.
You're opening it up tomorrow, what time?
I think tomorrow it's at 3:00.
3:00.
Is what it'll be. And we'll also have the phone bank available, too, for those that can't do over the internet.
And just don't put you have the BAM treatment on the application.
Yes.
Kevin, I just want to thank you for your full and complete reporting to the community. It's really good to keep it up to date and we appreciate you coming in every other week to give us those updates. It's real critical to the success of the whole program. So, thank you, Kevin, for doing so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kevin.
Been a couple of weeks.
Mayor, I did just want to say a few things about the proclamation for the memorial today. I know there will be a ceremony tonight at 7:00 p.m. But I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that proclamation and some of the information that Kevin just shared and that he's been, we've been fortunate enough to have him here talking about in our chambers. I'm really, I don't know, I'm really moved and I'm really frustrated. I'm really, find myself some days at a loss of words for what this virus has done to our community and our nation. I think we've lost somewhere around 211 lives in Woodbury County. And just think about that. I mean, I find myself thinking about that often as an elected official, that I ran for public office with the hopes of making a difference in my community's life, you know, to whether it's quality of life, whether it's the expansion of business, whether it's attracting or retaining more young professionals, you name it. But one of the things I never would have anticipated is losing 211 lives while I was in office over the course of one year, over the course of one year. And the thing that I struggle most with is could we, could I, could we as a council have done more? Because a lot of times I think that, you know, we were trying to follow the direction of the governor and what she was handing down and meet those demands. And even with following that protocol, could we have done more? We tried in stating an ordinance, encouraging our citizens. I've done a lot of things as far as tried to make it on social media, tried to do things in this council chambers and have been blessed to have the support of the rest of the council and making sure that we try to pass these ordinances and do everything that we can. But even with those measures, we still lost 211 people. And I get so frustrated that I think some of those lives could have been spared if we could have just put the partisan politics aside and understood, tried to listen to science, tried to follow our ordinances. We ask our citizens to follow other ordinances that the city has in place. But we have ordinances such as this, where we ask individuals when they come into council chambers or when they're in a city facility to wear a mask. And we still have people today that refuse to follow these ordinances. I think it's very disheartening. I think we've lost friends, we've lost family members, we've lost law enforcement officers, we've lost first responders. And we still struggle with wanting to hold up our personal freedom rather than understand that sometimes we have to wear a mask to protect those around us. At the end of the day, I always ask myself, could we have done more? And hindsight is 2020, but I am going to continue to push CDC guidance, make sure that we encourage each other socially distanced to wear a mask, do everything that we can to protect one another, and of course, be vaccinated if you're eligible. So, I will be at the memorial tonight, definitely thinking about those people in our community that have been lost and continuing to try to break through to those individuals that continue to defy our ordinance or just are not listening to science, which is disheartening in itself. So, but I thank you for that proclamation and I'll be there tonight. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda, which is items 3 through 10H. Consider them to pass unanimously unless separate roll call votes requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item on the agenda, please come up at the podium as I read that item and state your name and address so we can record for the record. I'm sorry, for the record. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Remember that you'll be limited to three minutes. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of February 22nd, 2021. Four is a resolution authorizing an application for funding from the FAA under the airport coronavirus response grant program. Five, a resolution scheduling hearings on a $300 civil penalty against Pilot Travel Center for violation of the cigarette laws. Six is a resolution approving amendment number one to the independent contractor agreement with IAAC for temporary staffing at the airport. Seven is a resolution amending the position classification manuals, salary scheduling, payroll complement by adding an airport operations officer. Are we dropping an employee, too, as part of this? I think we are, but I want to make sure we are.
Yeah, Mike Coletti, Assistant City Manager. This replaces the current airport worker one position.
Okay, but normally we have, don't we normally have a resolution? Okay, as long as.
This is a replacement of.
I know, but I thought we also had the deal to drop that. Normally, when we drop one to add a new position, we normally drop one because you've got so many employees authorized, but I hope you're right.
Isn't it a reclassification more than it is an addition? Did I read that right, Mike?
That's the intent, is reclassify that position.
I think that might be the difference. I want to double-check that, too, though, but I thought it was a reclassification.
That's correct. Janelle Bertrand, Human Resources Director. That is right, it is a reclassification. This position will be used instead of the airport worker one.
And what's the difference in the pay grade?
Same.
Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting construction documents for the South Fairmont Street Reconstruction Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the 28th Street Water Main Replacement Project. Nine are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Dan, a receipt a minute. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Voting electronically.
Yes.
Got it? You can bring it over here, don't mind. You want to vote for me? Thanks, buddy.
Can I hit a button?
No, 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 you got it. It's going to come up? Okay. Pass is 5-0. Eleven is a hearing and resolution approving Center Street Park, East of West Side Little League deferred from February 22nd, 2021. Motion request to defer this item till March 8, 2021. I'll move that.
Second.
I do want to have you look at, here's the deal, that they want paid for both complexes. I think we can understand that. But, and I don't have any grandkids at Morningside, but it's not fair that they have two complexes. We need to be fair with these complexes. If they're going to get paid for two, running two complexes, Morningside, and, because they are two separate Little Leagues out there for strikers. And so, we need to look at that when you bring it back. Who you got?
Come on.
Okay. Pass is 5-0. Twelve is a hearing and resolution accepting the Neighborhood Services proposal for the lease of land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that. But I, the hearing's open, but I got a question. You got two people in this office? Office is a pretty good size and all of a sudden, we don't have enough storage for what?
Jill Waterside, Neighborhood Services Manager. We have five people in the office currently. We had the opportunity to look at taking over the next-door space because we have a lot of items that we're currently using a storage unit for, for the homeless that we transition into houses or apartments. So, we felt like that would be a good opportunity for us. We also were approached at the same time by a use that complements what we do and they would like to sublease the space also. And so, they'll be going in there starting this month if this is approved tonight. And we also have another subleasing in there as well. So, the benefit cost worked for us.
It may work for you, but I'd like a lot more explanation because can you sublease? Is that allowed? Okay, and how much are you going to get on the sublease?
We are.
What are you paying for it? I, you have to remember that some of us had problems getting on our homework today. So, I read it, but I'm not going to read that, the whole lease on my phone.
It was $11 a square foot, right?
Yeah, but it ends up being around $1,300 a month.
And how much are you subbing out?
And half of that will be covered by the subleasing.
And they're going to pay that, plus the CAM charges?
Plus, I'm sorry, the what?
You've got CAM charges, I believe, for snow removal in that lease. I saw something about CAM charges.
Yeah, 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 that will be covered, too.
Okay.
We're going to try it for a year and see how it goes and then we'll reevaluate.
How, we have two people working with the homeless.
We have, we have five in that space working with the homeless.
Okay, we had two on the street. How many we have on the street now?
Yes. Well, we still are, we're focusing on our rapid rehousing program right now and doing less street outreach just because of the amount of clients and the volume that we have. So, we have five total, but we're not as out on the street as much anymore.
They used, some of them used to be here in City Hall.
Yep, mm-hmm. And now they're all down at MLK. It just makes it easier for our clients to reach them because coming into City Hall can be pretty intimidating sometimes and finding us up on third floor. So, it's worked out really well because our staff is much more accessible to those that they serve.
Well, then, I would say if you're doing that, why are we not opening up the staff downstairs in the housing? That bothers me that the rest of the City Hall is open, but we're not down here and we're working with basically the same clientele.
Oh, of having them come here and receive services versus go there?
No, but we don't open it downstairs here. That, you can't get into housing without a special appointment. And most of us, I understand their concerns, but we all have those. If you go, that door down on the first floor is locked, you can't get in there.
Yeah.
Okay. When are we going to be able to open that back up? People need Section 8 vouchers, too.
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know.
Well, you're the.
I'm not, I'm not over Section 8.
All right, well, where's Martin? When are you going to get us that opened up again, Marty? If we're doing all this stuff with the homeless people, which seem to probably be more high-risk COVID-wise than anybody, why are we not?
I know they were, I know they've been working by appointment, but I can talk to Amy tomorrow.
Well, I know they work by appointment, but, you know, when a council member has a fob and they can't even come in the side door, that's a little tough to understand why, how that's such a high-security area for some of us, I guess. I'm.
I'll talk with Amy tomorrow.
All right.
Well, and I would just want to know, I would be interested in knowing if anyone has had trouble with that. I mean, if someone's saying that they wanted to stop down and they didn't have an appointment or couldn't get in and couldn't have an appointment, I want to know if that concerned.
I haven't heard about anything like that recently. You know, it was confusion in the beginning, but I think recently it's gone fairly smoothly, but I.
Yeah, that's what I would want to know.
Spend an hour downstairs and watch. People go to that door and they can't get in. I can guarantee you, I've seen it three times.
Okay. Well, and that's all I was asking.
Right.
Is I just want to know there's an actual problem.
Okay. I'll get back to you with an update.
Okay. Thank you, Marty.
Anyone else to be heard? Hearing is closed. Pass is 5-0. Thirteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposals of FiberCom for leasing the land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing's now open. Anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Pass is 5-0. Fourteen is a hearing and resolution assessing a $300 civil penalty against Dollar General Store Number 5881 for violation of the cigarette laws. I'll move that. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Pass is 5-0. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution assessing a $300 civil penalty against Hy-Vee Gas Number 1 for violation of the cigarette laws. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? The hearing is open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Pass is 5-0. Sixteen is a hearing and resolution assessing a $300 civil penalty against Hy-Vee Main Street for violation of the cigarette laws. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Pass is 5-0. Passes five zero. Seventeen's a resolution approving, you understand, letter of understanding with Woodbury County for the Jailsite Improvements Project and redevelopment of the Law Enforcement Center. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone, we don't have to, anyone to be heard on it? Okay. Passes five zero to one, Mr. Moore abstaining. Eighteen's a resolution approving a Third Amendment to the Development Agreement, a First Amendment to the Minimum Assessment Agreement, and a substitute promissory note with lawyer, hope you all limited partnership. I'll, I'll move that, but I want to move to defer that for one week.
Second.
I'll call that. Moore?
Stane.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greck.
Aye.
Okay, presentation for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. Mayor and Councilman Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm excited to be able to present Phase Two designs for you today. This project dates all the way back to 2016. Phase One broke ground in June of 2020. Phase Two is on a similar timeline with, uh, hopes to break ground in June. To date, the fundraising committee has received $4,815,000 in pledges to date, of which 1.1 million was received in grants. We do have a few members of our Riverfront Steering Committee in attendance today. With that, I will turn it over to Tom Rogers of Smith Group to present Phase Two and answer any questions you may have.
Do you have those pledge cards?
I'm still looking at it.
Still looking at it.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Good to see everybody again. I'm Tom Rogers from Smith Group. For anyone who, who doesn't know me, and I'm also here with Greg Roth from Meadster and Kim, and Andy Luen from Smith Group. And I'm just going to go over where we're at with the project right now, both with the Phase One construction, and then Phase Two, the additional improvements that will go out for bid. So, we'll talk a little about progress. I'll show you a little bit of the examples of, of, of how we refined Phase Two for bid. We'll talk briefly about budget and schedule as well. So, we're just about complete with our documents. They'll be finalized at the end of this month. The city, the city would adopt the docs, the documents in April, and then would go to bid. The bid opening could happen as soon as May of this year, with the award shortly thereafter, schedule standpoint. Just a reminder of where we've come, it wasn't that long ago that this was parking lot for the Argosy, and, and there was, there was not a lot that you could do on the riverfront. Both the, the construction of the highway and all the planning we've done has really come a long way since then, and then coming back to the overall plan, really going back to where we were from a master plan, and always remembering those three big ideals that we started with of creating community spaces, everyday places, and embracing the river, and making sure that we, we stay true to those. And I think some of the, some of the design improvements, some of the refinements that we did, have, have done since then, have really embraced those three things. Phase One, which is under construction right now, was intended to do a couple things. First, to construct the underlying infrastructure of the park, and build the main circulation systems of the park, and then build some of the basic improvements. So, that includes the parking lots, the overall trails, the playground, and the stockyard gardens. It also includes the basketball courts, one shelter and restroom, a dog park, the great lawn, and the promenade. You can see within this plan that there are a few areas that are, are just lawn, and they were intended to be turf until they were put in at subsequent phases. You can also see that we hadn't touched the far east end of the site. That construction is, is moving right along. This picture was actually taken in the fall, but you can see the circulation system in place. You can see that the earthwork and some of that grading is in place right now. We were out on the site today, and we're meeting tomorrow to go through the, the plans and the schedule for the construction this summer. The Phase Two improvements, to add on to Phase One, are highlighted in red in this image. Walking from west to east, they include the West Overlook, the Virginia Overlook, the Interactive Fountain Overlook in Floyd Plaza, the Graded Overlook, which I'll go to in more detail in a little bit, and some of the improvements on the east end. One of the other things we looked at for part of this work was exploring opportunities for additional parking, and we did a brief study looking at the, the existing lot that is partially owned by the DOT to the north of the property, just to understand how many, how much parking could fit in here, what the parameters would be if we would build something, what the stormwater requirements would be. So, this is a basic plan that shows that layout. It includes about 210 parking stalls and with seven ADA stalls. Then I'll walk through the improvements from west to east, just in a little bit more detail. All of these are really these, these marquee little touchpoints of the project, whether they're an overlook like this one, or whether they're our key destinations. But they're places that we held off from the first phase for various reasons. One of those was that we didn't want to flirt with any of the permitting issues along the federal improvements of the riverbank itself, so we kept these off. It turns out that we shouldn't have permitting problems or permitting issues for that, that work. We're finalizing that, but we've heard from the Corps that there are no federal permits that we will need. The West Overlook is the former stair entry to the Argosy, and we'll be leaving all the concrete in place, we'll be leaving the stairs in place. They're all in really good shape. We'll remove the railing, update the railing to match the style of the rest of the park, and add some seating, so there's a small overlook area that's down there. We, we considered removing it, but because we'd actually need a permit to remove it, we decided to leave it in place and just take advantage of it while we could. We'll update the lighting there as well, just so it ties in with everything else.
Tom?
Yes?
Could, could you please go back to the slide before this one on the...
I sure can.
You said that right now is owned by DOT?
Uh, some of it is, I'm sorry, I don't have the property map of who owns what. There's some...
But DOT has some of that?
They do own some of it, yes. There's some right-of-way work that has to be cleaned up.
And that's the land that we need to make sure as a city that we have the first right to purchase it back from DOT, is that right?
I believe that is correct, but I don't want to speak out of turn on it.
We don't necessarily have the first right to buy it back. Well, and they didn't, they didn't condemn it?
No, but most of the time, the owner, previous owner has the first right to redeem that property, and so you've got to somehow get the Corps convinced that you need it, which is not impossible to do, but...
Can we be, can we be working on that now, though?
Should be, yeah.
I was going to say, I, I thought we've given pretty clear direction in previous meetings that we need to explore that, but it was always the DOT issue, you know what I mean, going through that way.
But who's, who's handling that for us, for the city? I mean, I just want to make sure that we're ready to go when it becomes available, and the mayor's right, it does go back to the, to the first...
Lumber has the right?
To the first owner, but...
All that property from Mo, I understand, across the street from the...
Because the parking's going to be critical to us. I just want to make sure we're ready to go at the time it becomes...
Dave Carney and I had a meeting with Dakin Schultz about a week ago, and, and he was giving us some updated information on the, on the process for determining the right-of-way disposition, so...
Army Corps might be involved in that? Is that...
No, no, no.
No.
Whoever owned that property before can be a stumbling block. It can and can't be. The DOT can sometimes give it, the city, the preference, but it's not, not something that's automatic by any stretch.
Right. There's this process they follow, and there are some different steps along the way that, and depending on the rights of, as the mayor's had, to the adjacent property owners or previous owners, or, and the city has certain options as well, so we'll, we'll get that clarified and get that information.
We need to clarify the property too, where Lechner Lumber was, because it's not the same Lechner Lumber today that it was when this property
That's true.
got sold, so we, we may be able to bump that one up too, but that's certainly a piece you want to look at.
Would you mind giving us kind of an update on that when you do have something?
Yeah, we, like I said, just about a week ago, we met with Dakin, and
Okay.
he was giving us some information from the right-of-way office in Ames.
Thanks, Marty.
Because I agree, I think it's critical.
No problem. Anything else on this one?
No, I was just agreeing. I think it's a critical piece to this. I'd, I would really be in, in favor of us going full steam ahead and doing anything that we can.
All right, I'll continue on that. If there is anything else, I'll go a little bit quicker, because most of what you'll see is, is not new information, so if, if there is anything that you want me to slow down or go back to, please let me know.
On this, on this West Overlook, you, you won't have a permitting issue with that?
No, we're leaving, essentially, we're leaving everything that's there, that's a foundation, that touches the federal improvements, in place.
Excellent.
So, really, all we're doing is pulling off the railing, putting new railing on, and then adding a seat at the bottom, and then adding a new light at the top. So, it's pretty much what it is there today. We're just formalizing it as one seating area. The second piece of improvements are at Virginia Landing, so at the end of Virginia, where we have planned a shelter and an overlook. Now, this is that, the next entry to where the Argosy was, this is where the accessible route was into the, into the boat, I guess. And what we're going to do is actually leave part of that in place. We're not touching the foundation of that, but we're knocking some of the walls down, we're removing the pavement that's there, we're updating that and adding an overlook that just, just kind of peaks out at the end of that. Then there's basically what I would refer to as stadium seating. It's three feet higher, there's an 18-inch bench and another 18-inch bench. There's stairs and then a route around it that gets you up from this lower level to the upper level at the shelter. The shelter has two restrooms in it, they're both unisex restrooms with one stall in them, and then about 1,500 square feet or so of covered space next to that. This is just a layout of that shelter itself and the assembly area underneath it, showing both of the toilet rooms. This is a view, this is a view that you had seen before, what it would look like if you crossed Virginia and walked up to the shelter, so we're looking straight out across the river. This is the view to that shelter, and, and this screens the entry of the two restrooms. You can still see, see through it, it's just a wood screen wall, and you can see that Gathering Plaza here in the background. You can see the drop-off off to the right where we show two food trucks. These are, these are important here, because there are, there's power hookups at these locations for them, that were put in as part of Phase One. This is a view from the water, looking back at Virginia Landing, so in that last view, we were standing back here. You can see the shelter itself, here's the two restrooms, here's the covered areas, and then here's that upper and lower terrace that I was talking about before. There's a few steps up between the two, and then you can see the yoga lawn and the stockyard garden in the background. Moving farther to the east is Floyd Plaza, so at the end of Floyd Boulevard. That drop-off is just off the screen to the north. The overall layout of Floyd Plaza has stayed more or less just how it was before. The overall size of the building is the same. There's been minor details, just cleaning up how everything fits together. One of the other things that we did was we also added in a little bit more planting, and you can see there's a few more trees in here. When we did take away the, the river lights, the large vertical structures, we felt that there wasn't enough vertical presence around this place, and it seemed really big and open, so we added a few trees to help enclose that space a little bit. I'll show you an image of that in a moment, but that also is around this overlook space that you see here, and then just kind of, just kind of screening or enclosing that whole area. This shows the building itself. This shelter is bigger. The open-air assembly area is about 2,700 square feet, so almost double what the Virginia one is. It has larger bathrooms, men's and women's bathroom, that are each about 300 square feet, so that serves a much wider, or broader capacity of people. And then a utility and storage room that houses both MEP for the fountain facility storage, ground storage, and, and space for the janitor as well. So, all, all in that, that building, all the enclosed space is about 3,500 square feet. This shows a view from the water, showing the overlook, and we added a couple trees here, just so you can see how that overall character is. Otherwise, though, this is the rendering that you saw before, is that overall layout hasn't really changed. One thing that doesn't show up is there is a fence, I just realized this, so I apologize. There's a fence and railing that was added at the edge of this walk. That's part of the Phase One improvements, we just cleaned up how those two things tied together. This shows a view of the fountain as it was designed, and we did have some conversations about the fountain today. I can go into that in more detail if, if we need to, and we come back to it, otherwise, I'll keep going at the moment. This shows the enclosure of the fountain, that is, we're looking at as a series of concrete blocks that you could sit on or climb on. The, the fountain is a combination of water manifolds that have 10 to 15 jets in them that shoot up from, from six inches to as much as five feet. There's three of those systems, so they work independently of one another, and they go up and down. In addition to that, there's a fog system that is here. The fog system could be controlled, so it's not, it shuts off, and the fountain shuts off at certain wind levels, and we can, we can manually determine what that appropriate wind rate is for river conditions, depending on where wind is coming from, or what we see that works well or doesn't work well. This provides an example of what those jets could look like. This is a, or a non-recirculating system like we have, just showing the type of stream of water that you would get, and an example of lighting. This shows that a little bit larger here, and this shows a little bit more what the, those individual manifolds could look like. We also had a little bit of feedback today on the overall design, that there was some concern about the fog, and there was some concern about these. We did talk to our fountain consultant today, and we did feel that we could probably bid the project as it is. If there were minor modifications that we had to make with both of those, we could handle those with shop drawings within the overall context of the project.
Tom?
Yeah?
On the, on that fountain, you know, we want to do it right the first time, of course, and that's always been your philosophy too, but we want to make sure the fountain would continue to work. It's going to be
Mm-hmm.
working more than it's going to be shut down.
Mm-hmm.
So, is, so is the fountain, fountain that you have for Sioux City, that identical fountain has been used elsewhere?
The identical, uh, the identical fountain, I would say...
I mean, the Dallas one is a little different, right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The one in Dallas is a little bit different than what you've designed on Sioux City.
Going different.
Yes, all of these, all of the fountains are a little bit different, and unfortunately, when we look at the fountain design, what we're really doing is piecing together different appearances of what water looks like, and what lighting looks like, and what spacing looks like. There isn't one that we can pull off the shelf and say, this is the fountain design for here, because we really started with making a, making a fountain that was unique. So, we're using a system that is a, is a used system, it's something that they have used before. We're using a non-recirculating system, so it's not a, it's not a huge maintenance burden of, of checking that water every day and testing it every day. The, the fog is a reverse osmosis system that we actually, we had additional calls to confirm today. There shouldn't be a problem with hard water, they don't see that as a, as an issue. So, from an overall maintenance standpoint, there would be, there would be, you know, cleaning of the system, changing of filters, that sort of thing, but it's, it's a system that they, and we feel will run appropriately for the city.
Have a specialty then? A specialty-type system that you have to have someone construct it that knows what they're doing?
Yes, the, well, I will, I will say this, when the fountain is installed, they would need to show someone from park staff how it's, how to operate and maintain it, so that there would be some training that happens with part of that. That would be any system that you would install like this, even, you know, if you were to put in a splash pad for the first time, the first time that was done, and there was some kind of training with that, and the city runs splash pads. So, it's, it is a system that there is an operating procedure for.
Maintenance is going to be, I mean, that's going to be very important, as it is with any mechanical...
It is with any, just as it is with anything else, maintenance is important to that system, you cannot just ignore it.
But that is the concern that I have, especially, I would just want to make sure we have examples in similar climates. I think the freezing and thawing, freezing and thawing, I mean, I, we have multiple fountains at Morningside College, and sometimes they can cause headaches, and I just want to make sure, I mean, I know we have splash pads, right? So, I mean, I, I know that we have experience with these jets and, and lines underneath. I just want to make sure it's not a burden going on, or you know what I mean, ongoing cost.
Yeah, we have a lot, now, this is, system is a little bit different, but we have a lot of splash pads within the city, which are very low maintenance.
Yeah.
The, the one at Combe Park was just ground sprays, so there's some aspects of that that's a little bit similar to this, and I got to go back and check the orientation of the jets, but that might be, there's parts of that splash pad that kind of mirror what's but that might be, there's parts of that splash pad that kind of mirror what's going on here. But I got to dig into that a little bit more.
So two, there's, there's two examples here as well. The, the larger example that you see on the right is from Janesville, Wisconsin. So that has similar climate free-staw conditions that we have here. I have a link. We can look at that if you want. That actually has a similar way the water works, where it would go up and down. That's from Navy Pier in Chicago, so that's a similar climate as well in terms of how it's operating from a free-staw standpoint, and it does get, it does get shut down.
Thank you, Tom.
Oh, I don't have to do that. One of the things that we added along the way was we took advantage of some infrastructure that was there. When we were originally touring the site, we noticed this, and, and we probably didn't pay enough attention to it, but there's an existing structure that was left over as part of the former infrastructure. And it's a really unique perspective on the river, because it does, you can see from the, the plan view here, it does stick out a little bit. This green line is the top of the bank. This white line is the embankment. So at the end of the overlook, you're actually pretty high above that embankment, and we thought it was a very unique perspective. Going back to that idea of embracing the river and connecting to it wherever we could while staying high above it, we thought it was a very unique opportunity to get access to the structure. So what we did is we designed an access route to it, along with concrete that would go over parts of it. We'd expose part of it in the middle, so you could still see that structure that was under there. And then we also put handrails around the whole thing to, to keep people in. We didn't want to give access to half of it and have people climb over them. Our structural engineers looked at it, and they felt that it was in good, good, safe condition, appropriate, acceptable to have people on it. We thought it was a great thing to take advantage of as an opportunity of something that was there, both to see the river and also see some of the unique infrastructure that was here before.
And it looks to me like it's accessible as well, right? No stairs?
It is accessible, correct. Yes, and, and we did, we, by paving over the top of it, we were able to make it accessible.
The old KD dock, isn't it?
Yes.
That's what it is, yeah.
Yes.
How they keep, kept the rail rates low is by having that dock there forever.
And actually, it would be, it would be great to have some interpretive signage there to tell that story at some point. And that's something we talked about today, is adding some, some historical signage and some, some educational signage throughout the park, and that would be a great opportunity to do something like that.
State Steel sold the steel for that back when they built that dock.
Any other questions about that? Okay. Lastly, we looked at the east end. So as you recall, we connected as part of the first phase, we included the connection to the, to the bike trail and the dog park. And we left, and we also built part of this, this turf here, but we left everything off on the east end untouched as part of the first phase. So as, for the second phase, we've added walks to circulate through there. We've added some fill to go over the existing, the existing ground that's, that's there. That ground was, did have some contamination issues. Does, does have a cap on it. So we've graded so that we don't penetrate that cap. There's no, to our understanding, there's no problems with that, as long as we're not penetrating that cap. All of this floats above that. This is planted in a native seed mix. We do have some bluegrass areas that are mowed paths within it, and it's naturalized planting. So it's a nice, it's a nice place to walk. It's a nice place to circulate around. We've added a freedom rock and Lewis and Clark signage at the end of our lawn area. We've also added another overlook that we call the east overlook up here on the top. And that's staying up high above, and then we go down the hill to the existing structure that's there, and that will remain in place. But we will place some fencing around it so people can't access it. It will be cleaned up, and some of that, some of the parts and pieces will be removed. We also added a sidewalk to access down through the riprap and access this lower east overlook. That is another piece of infrastructure that's here. There's some fencing around that to keep people in, and then protecting this structure, which you can access from below, but we're fencing to keep people out. And like I said, that would be, that would be cleaned up, and some of it, some of the parts and pieces would be removed. But really getting access to this whole, this whole piece of the property and provide an accessible route down here. We've talked about fishing. There would be an opportunity to walk off of this sidewalk then and fish at this point as well. On that, on that easternmost end, there is a picnic shelter. This is just an open-air structure. There's no restroom associated with this. We do have another one of these at the west end that will be built as part of Phase One, so it's really just repeating that same element. It has about 200 square feet. There's room for, I think, we show three, it's three to four picnic tables. I think we had today about 12, seating for 12 underneath it, so it's something that could be rented or utilized by families or for picnicking. And this shows a view back looking over that area, so this is, this is the edge of that walk where our bluegrass area is, and this is that picnic shelter. Back here, you can see the basketball courts and then the Floyd Shelter beyond. So I mentioned the, the Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One are all of the parts and pieces that are labeled in black. Again, the overall circulation, a few of these improvements. The improvements in Phase Two are those labeled in red, the overlook, the Virginia overlook, the fountain, and Floyd Plaza, shade structure, the graded overlook, and this, this eastern end. The overall budget for Phase One was $6 million. It was actually budgeted at that, and it, the, the bid was just under $6 million, right, right at the amount that we budgeted. Phase Two is budgeted at $5 million with a contingency, so, and that includes, that includes all of it. The full build-out cost of that is about $11 million with both phases combined. Right now, we are still working on fundraising for the remaining improvements. So we have included alternates, bid alternates, in this bid. We have a base bid of $2.9 million, and then we have four alternates within the bid. One is the Floyd Shelter itself, so this building here. Two is the Floyd Overlook, so not the plaza, but just this little overlook piece here, and some of the associated improvements around that. The Virginia overlook and plaza together, and then, because these are combined, and then the Virginia Shelter. Right now, we're looking at a fundraising gap between our $5 million budget and where we're at at about $1.5 million. Our base bid, which we think we could, we could potentially move forward with, we're very close, of $2.9 million, plus Alt IV, just the Floyd Shelter, would be about $3.7 million. So we have money today for that, and we're working on fundraising for the remaining pieces. We would look at where bids came in with these alternates to determine appropriate plans. If for some reason, for instance, we had money to build one but not the other, the plans for Virginia, for instance, are completed, and we might be able to do that as a subsequent third phase. Any questions there? Okay. Again, overall schedule, final documents to the city this month, adopting the docks in April, with a bid opening and a word of, potential award of contract in May of this year. Also give a little update on pedestrian bridge. When we started this, I think last time I met with you was about a year ago. We had a conversation about the potential for a pedestrian bridge here. So what we did is we took a, a look from a design parameter standpoint of what the base needs of that bridge would be. Had some meetings with the Army Corps and the DNR to understand what their parameters would be. Looked into some other examples of pedestrian bridges and came up with some overall budget considerations for that. So a couple of the things to consider. This is a section of this site looking downriver or to the east. So Sioux City is on the left side. South Sioux City is on the east side. This shows with a slightly exaggerated perspective, just so you can see where the bridge would have to be. It has to be quite a bit above the water. From a navigation standpoint, it has to be about 52 feet above the average, the average elevation of the water, which is 1070. So we have to be up at about 1123. For those that are familiar with the Bob Carey Bridge, it's, that's very similar there. It's about, it's about 50 feet above the water level. That stays above, that, that stays above the 10-year, obviously, and the 100-year. There is some filling we'd have to do to get up to that height, and we would have to wrap around. I'm going to go back one draw, or one slide just to show you. So we looked just briefly at grading to see that we could get up to this height and wrap around, so we could do that within the green space that we have. And we added additional run, or potential run on the south side as well to accommodate that rise. A couple of the other things of note, there is a 300-foot navigation channel that would have to remain free and clear. Our bridge span would have to be about 430 feet, and the river itself is about 650 feet across at that point. So altogether, we're talking about a bridge of about 1,500 feet in length. I'll show you a few of the examples we looked at. There are more, but we thought that there, there were reasons why we liked all of these. The Bob Carey Bridge, of course, was built in 2006 for a cost of $22 million. That bridge is quite a bit longer. It was 3,000 feet long. They had a lot to do to get over some, if I remember correctly, there's some wetlands there, and they had more land that they had to get over.
You said ours needed to be 1,500?
1,500, so about half this length. Yep.
Right, okay.
Yep. That was funded by over $19 million in grants. So you can see from a, from a cost standpoint, it's, 2006 was a little while ago, but that, that bridge is, is quite a bit larger. The next one we'll look at is the Center Street Bridge in Des Moines. That one was built in 2010 for a cost of about $12.5 million. It was quite a bit shorter, only 400 feet in span, or in, in overall length, but it's also a double bridge, so there's a lot more infrastructure that's there.
Lots of grant money there, too.
Yep, and there, there's lots of grant money. What we've seen is these are typically tied to some large federal, federal grant to support them. Gray Station Pedestrian Bridge in Des Moines was a little bit less, about $4 million, but it was an interesting design that was completed in 2019, and just from a overall design and length, there were some, some references that we made to that. Had a unique lighting display. And then the High, the High Trestle Bridge was completed for $15 million in 2010. That one's actually longer. It's 2,500 feet long. Funded through, 80% of the funding was through public grants. And that, of course, is a very memorable lighting display. And then Providence River Pedestrian Bridge in Rhode Island, $22 million for only 450 feet. They had quite a bit more going on with a, just from the wood standpoint of some of their detailing and finishing, the hardwood deck. And that was a bond, that was actually a bond project. So, oh, last one. Also, we looked at the 41st Street Pedestrian Bridge in Chicago, which is not go over the river, but it does span 1,500 feet. So it's a comparable in that case. It did have a lot of infrastructure that it had to tie into and go around and some, some other costs. So there, that cost, or that bridge was funded with $18.7 million from a build grant plus IDOT funding. So overall, based on the, based on the analysis, the structural engineers took a look at it and, and said, based on something in that realm, where you would want an iconic structure with a span of that, they would estimate budgeting 15 to 20 million as, right now, to move forward with something like that. It's important that it supported goals for both Sioux City and South Sioux City and the comp plans. I think it would be important to move forward with design to engage both of the communities about what that pedestrian bridge should be, and, and, you know, what's that iconic look? What are the desirable things that would be wanted as part of that? But we felt that this gave a good framework as a place to start. There's, there's due diligence and understanding of what are the obstacles to overcome from a, a span and design and, and construction of where, where we need to start? What are our parameters that we're working with? Any other questions about the bridge?
That was very impressive.
Thank you. So with that, we are, we are here with, as I said before, we are about to start on the second year of construction for Phase One. We have a, a meeting tomorrow morning to talk about that. And we are hoping to wrap up the plans for Phase Two by the end of this month, and they would be ready for bid. And with that, I can answer any additional questions about the project.
Good presentation, Tom. I, I want to thank the Riverfront Development Steering Committee, though, because they've worked real well with you to get where we are today, and, and we've had a lot of input from the committee members, and it's been invaluable. Everything from technical things to Kelly talking about maintenance, just, you know, just common sense maintenance items that need to be done, because that's one thing we definitely need to do going forward, once this is constructed, is to maintain and to make it look like Day One, you know, at all times. So I'm really excited about this, and I appreciate your, you're talking about the pedestrian bridge. I think that's something that council had asked about and wanted some input on, and, and some ideas on what we do there going forward. I think we certainly need to have some dialogue discussion with South Sioux about that. Our friends in South Sioux are here today. Thank you for coming. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about what was presented today, but you're, you're certainly welcome to. But, but this is really an exciting project, and you've been real easy, at least for me, from what I've seen, you've been real easy to, to work with, and stated in clearer terms that I can understand it. So good presentation, and, and it's really, we're really excited about this project, and it's, it's showcasing the riverfront, which we haven't really done before. We've done bits and pieces, don't get me wrong, and I, I give credit to past councils that did that to get us to where we are today, but you took something that, it wasn't a clear drawing board. It wasn't, it wasn't a clean slate. I mean, there were some things you needed to work with, and you worked with them well. So I just want to thank you publicly for the good work you've done for us.
Thank you.
And thank the steering committee, because really, I, I keep saying this time and time again, that, that the city's built with volunteers and volunteer work. And without the volunteers and their input, we wouldn't be where we are today. So it's a very, it's very exciting. And, and I know Michelle Boston Ellis is here from Simcoe about some of the transportation parts and pieces of it. So we've had a lot of, it's been a really good teamwork effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know if I have anything new. I'm going to keep my remarks brief. The only thing that I would really ask, and Matt, just kind of thinking out loud, seeing this, revisiting this. Number one, speaking of Iowa DOT, especially with the parking spaces, the installment of that area, I think that needs to be a priority. I also remember, Matt, we had conversations, I believe, with Dakin, and maybe even Mr. Carney was a part of that as well. But if there's anything we can do to try to have that Virginia access, I think opening that up needs to be a priority. I think, I, if I remember our conversations correctly, it, it wasn't going to happen in this phase, but down the road, that was the hope. I think having that pass between where you'd be able to drive into the park and then get out at Virginia. Say, for instance, the, the, for instance, that I kept saying was, okay, you go all the way from Hamilton, and you drive down there, and there are no parking spaces available. There's no way, place for you to stop. Be much easier to hop on Virginia, get off there, and come around to that other side. It only makes sense, rather than, okay, well, now I have to turn around, go all the way back out to go to the other side there, especially if you're going to do a food truck for Food Truck Fridays or an event where people are trying to do it on their lunch break. I just think that that really is going to be needed.
But you're going to have to work with the DOT, because Virginia Street, getting back to that parking lot, is blocked off. It doesn't go through.
Yeah, no, I know. That's what I'm saying, is we had that conversation with Dakin, saying that that would be a down-the-road. That's, I completely agree. It'd be a DOT and lobbying them and talking about the need for that for the park.
Goes through on other places. I don't understand why it doesn't go through there, but-
Yeah. So I, I think-
That's better left to the engineering staff.
So I agree. That's something I would continue to push and lobby, and if I can make calls, if I can do anything, if any of us can, please let us know. The only other thing that I would offer in thinking about this again right now is just really looking to, Matt, I think your team does a great job of thinking year-round opportunities. That's something that I think I'm really learning about down at Cone Park. You know what I mean? That's the first big city park that I, a project that I've been on council and been able to work with. And I really appreciate, not only is it a winter activity that people can take advantage of, but there is a lot of offerings throughout the summer, spring, fall, et cetera. I would really ask what we want people to be doing and how they're going to utilize this park in the winter months. I mean, I, I, I think if there was a way, I know it would cost a lot more, to enclose those shelters, similar to the build of what it looks like at Cone Park. Gosh, can you imagine? You'd want to rent that space out and be looking out at the, the river and, in the winter? I mean, I, I think there would be some opportunities there to maybe capture revenue or rent out those spaces. Or, I mean, Sioux Falls just unveiled a $2 million plan for their ice skating loop, or whatever they're calling it. I mean, is there an opportunity to, whether you freeze where you're doing this area to make it ice skating, you know, where the fountain is going to be, or what those future plans could be, so that you really make it an interactive park year-round, rather than, well, now it's covered in snow, and if you want to cross-country ski, I guess you can, but, you know what I mean? I would just really ask the steering committee maybe to think about some of those things, what opportunities there are available. Again, it's just my, my two cents. I, I think you guys have done incredible work, but-
Maybe some of that lawn space down towards the Lewis and Clark end?
Yeah, and I would be open to really anything. I just want to make sure, like Cone Park, we're looking at all these creative ways to capture revenue and to offer more programming. We, we should be doing the exact same thing here. What can we offer in the winter? What's going to be interesting for people? What would they want to rent out or do or utilize for that space? Just, just my thoughts.
Can a tennis court be made into a skating rink?
I did, I did want to add that the-
I did want to add that the Floyd Shelter, the intention there is to have year-round bathroom use for the winter type of activities and events that would be take place there. We also anticipate building this park will create more opportunities for special events with the public, will handle more of those applications through Angel Wallace. So, yeah, we've talked about all those things, and we're very happy with the way the plans turned out for Phase Two. We are going to have some continued conversations about the fountain to make sure we have that stream line before we construct it. So Dave brought up some concerns, and we're going to work with him to make sure that the fountain is where we need it to be and possibly get more input from the steering committee.
I think you need to turn that on.
Battery might have...
You can hit here otherwise, Dave.
If you want to go over, yeah.
We had talked about the fountain again today, and obviously, the track record here of fountains in the community is about 0 for 5 so far, so we got to, it's important to get this one right, these guys have engaged really good consultants who are actually fountain consultants to do that. Maintenance is going to be key, and interactivity is going to be key. The fog and analyzing the fog and the maintenance of the fog and the usability of the fog is a cool element, but also one that could, you know, potentially be deployed other ways, and also just making sure that as we migrated from the big pillars of light, which we're not doing now with the fountains in front of them, to something different that we maybe look to adjust for something more interactive. We have some time, there's a decent amount in the budget, without it being obscene, to do that, but we just really want to make sure it's going to be a good, interactive fountain that people are going to enjoy.
Are you sticking with the big, like the long slabs that we saw on there?
We would stick with the overall pattern that we have. What we want to do is look, we're going to look a little bit closer at the fog and the wind and make sure, because fog and wind do have some dissipation issues. One of the things we talked about in the beginning of the project was that, from a maintenance standpoint, first and foremost, we didn't want a recirculating system, because a recirculating system requires that you have maintenance staff checking pH and, you know, where the water's at daily. So we decided to go with a system that is non-recirculating, so it flows through, it flows, you use it and it goes into the sanitary sewer. So we were mindful of making sure that our water use was not astronomical, which can happen very quickly with a fountain. So to make something more interesting and dynamic, we coupled, we coupled a little bit lower water use emitters with fog and lights as well. So there's kind of these three things that are going on. I think we had, Dave brought up some really good points, we had a great conversation today about what if that doesn't happen, it's an expensive thing, there's some, you know, what's the maintenance of this, are we okay with this, how do we take care of this?
Do we just turn it into landscaping?
We don't want to do that, so we want this to be right. So we had a couple, we had another conversation with our fountain consultant today, and within that, we can look at that a little bit tighter. If we decide that we don't want to do that fog element, we'll transfer that to adding some more manifolds to the system, and we can have a little bit more water than we talked about, and there's some things that we can do that make that potentially a little bit more dynamic of, those can be canted over one direction or another, and they're on three different manifolds so they can move around and get a little bit more interactive nature, so they're a little bit more, what's the word I'm looking for? You have to anticipate a little bit more with them, rather than just straight up and down.
Like the bucket that fills up and then dumps on your head.
Yep, they still have the light, they still have all those things. It'll be very similar to what we have, but it might have a little bit more water and a little bit less fog when all is said and done, and those are the details.
The kicker is to avoid what happened at the Tyson Center, I mean, a lot, there was a lot of issues with that fountain, which doesn't run anymore, like the basin size and everything, but one of the biggest issues early on was too little water coming over the top, and with the breeze, it just becoming like a mist that blew all over everything. And it's just that kind of stuff, given the dynamics, and we want to make sure the thing works right and runs well and runs all the time, and Matt and those guys can easily maintain it, and it's just something that really works well. And, you know, hopefully the budget as well, these guys have done a great job of, with the alternates, picking the right alternates and trying to get this thing within budget, and we're still trying to raise enough money to be able to do everything, and if not, we're sure you guys will just flow a little more cash towards the project, kind of like the expo or something like that, you know, I know Bob's a...
Hope always brings eternal for you guys.
Hope springs eternal.
I've always appreciated that money's no object as long as it's the taxpayers, but...
And I just want to point out that the bridge over the river certainly makes the Ferris Wheel look like a bargain, so.
I would, that's one thing you and I can agree on, for sure, Dave.
What did your steering committee say about that bridge, though?
We, this is more of a probably conversation sidebar with the council more than the steering committee at this point, so it hasn't really brought up in recent conversations.
I'd say that's more of a who's going to get an earmark from who, and, you know, is that at the expense of something else? Because I think most of those bridges that you pointed out were, certainly the one down in Omaha was an earmark, and a federal earmark, and I don't know how you, whether $8 million or $12 million, I don't know how you fund that.
Well, that would definitely be a Phase Three if it was anything anyway, so...
Yeah, so we're just trying to raise enough for Phase Two.
Absolutely.
Be cool, but...
I was wondering, is there a chance that council may, I don't know if they'd want them, I'd take a copy of the PowerPoint. I have had a large number of people ask about how things are progressing, how soon will it be, what are all the features? I'd love to be able to share this with people, and maybe that can help with fundraising, too, I don't know.
We actually have our own website for this project, riverfrontsouciety.com, and we will upload this presentation to that website and promote the fundraising process as well.
Tell me the website.
Riverfrontsouciety.com.
Okay, thank you.
Are the basketball courts fenced?
Along the river, yes.
Well, they're all along the river, that's...
There's a barrier fence between the river and the basketball courts, but there's not fencing around the courts themselves.
Are they set up that you will have holes for pickleball courts, so that you could put nets up if you wanted to?
Not currently, now that we have the riverside courts and the leaf courts, but, so no, not currently.
Well, I don't, I see more pickleball than I do basketball in the riverfront, but...
And that's what I wondered, I don't know if there's any way to make it versatile to where you could have multiple offerings, but...
There's more pickleball courts in Sioux City than there are basketball courts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you ever drive by Spalding Park, you can see there's a demand for both.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, but did we ever get one in Leeds?
Yeah.
And how's the usage there? There's a difference there, I mean, it's just... There's a difference when you talk basketball courts, because those are neighborhood, those are neighborhood kids playing in those parks. Well, this isn't, this is a destination, but maybe I'm wrong. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Yes, thank you.
Matt. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing on Pete? No, they don't have any issues, thank you. Well, I might have issues, but they're just...
Nothing he wants to discuss.
They're not for public, yeah. We have an EAP program, in case you forgot.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, EAP, I have nothing more to add today.
I think I voiced my sentiments earlier, but, no, that's all I would have, Mayor.
Good luck tomorrow night, my Concordia girls will be in town for the championship.
It's a big game!
They even got me a ticket because I knew Morningside College was...
I was just going to ask, how do you get tickets, Alex?
So I don't know, I watched online, and I'm going to watch online again tomorrow.
Did you just go through Morningside's website?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I'd like to see that game, too, that'd be...
Well, I could call my Concordia friends, see if I could get you added to the list, too.
There you go. Well, let me know if, I don't know how to get tickets, but I can help out if you need...
Nothing further here. I have a couple of things. I want to know the process, I don't see Carney here because he got away from us, but I had a developer, I sent him to you, he poured a driveway like one inch off because all of a sudden, engineering is now getting into the driveway business. I hope that the engineering department is also getting into the plan review, because now all of a sudden, they start enforcing this after guys pour driveways, then, on my street, down the street from me, about six houses, that driveway, they go like that, and all of a sudden, we can only be like an inch drop or something. So I'd like to know what they're doing and what they've done to let contractors know that. Did that guy call you last week?
I was going to say, because that's come up in our teams in our meetings about one of, I don't know if it's the driveway you're talking about, Mayor, it's been a while back.
No, this just happened last week.
Because they showed one on slides, Pete, if you recall, that, I mean, you wouldn't even be able to hardly get the car up there.
Yeah, the grade was like...
Because the grade was so much, trying to go into the garage, it would high-center a vehicle almost. So that's when they, I know we're starting to look at more and look a little more closely.
All I'm saying is, if you're going to do that, they need to be in the plan review committee meetings then. That's where an engineer needs to be and say that driveway does not make grade.
Yeah, I forget...
So what is it they're doing exactly, Mayor?
I don't, there's a certain, they're only allowing so much grade. Well, we live in hills here, it sometimes isn't practical.
Yeah, I want to say, last time we had that conversation, they were talking seven or eight percent grade, and that was it.
Well, and they were, I was going to say, they were saying either the floor, the garage was going to have to be lowered or something, they were, I forget what it was, I mean, it was drastic changes.
Just want to make sure, Darrell's department does a great job when you change the building going to the home builders. The engineering department ought to do an equally good job of letting the home builders know what that means, and they should be in the meeting when we're approving housing plans, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
So they shouldn't go out afterwards and say you messed up on that driveway, that's all I'm trying to say.
No, that makes sense.
And the other thing is that Koskovich just told me that they told him after he does all this work to get that 144 lots, now you got to put a base, I'm sure it's some sort of a deal underneath because we're afraid of erosion, and is adding $350,000 to that Well, we have problems with, in Sioux City, we have problems on hills, we do, I get that with less hills, but that's flat ground out there. I don't know, once again, we've got a one-size-fits-all, we don't look at the topography or anything, so...
What's the base made out of? What's...
I don't, I'm...
Some kind of different soil?
They do it under, when you overlay asphalt now, they put a mesh between, I don't know why they do that kind of stuff, but...
Or strengthen it or something?
But I'd like to know what we're doing there, too. And last week, I know that they loved me because I saw all three of them talking about me when I went outside, which I don't blame them, but Bartlett and Wes promised they would get a, you know, they put a bid together and said, this is, we know how many hours it's going to take, and I ask them to justify their hours, why don't we have the report? They had to have it to bid the job.
Brad Pitt's got the report, I believe, today, it should go out tomorrow.
I wonder it's so expensive.
I move we adjourn. Second?
Shainer?
Hi.
Gott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Rettkin?
Hi.
Moore?
Thanks, everyone.